You got it?
Yeah, you're gonna leave that up though for me.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a lot of work. I mean, I put our stuff together for our. My husband likes.
Not just putting numbers in the box, it's all that can be a tribe.
Just make sure I have the right one now that you just said that.
With the kids and college tuition and always looking for.
So, welcome to the Board of Education meeting today, Tuesday, September thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Please join us in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
So, welcome, everybody. It's always fun at our first Board of Education meeting since the start of classes, and we're so excited to be able to start this school year off with students because it's one of our favorite things we get to do is to celebrate our students and the success that is all around them. So, we welcome you. We're excited to hear about you. There's a lot of things on the agenda tonight. We're excited to talk about all of it. Just in the effort of safety, I just want to remind the auditorium that there's two exits at the rear of the auditorium as well as exits at each side of the stage. I will introduce the dais. Starting all the way to my left is trustee Tasneen Megji. Then I have trustee Lynn Hirsch. I have trustee David Keef. I have board vice president Bob Fellerino. I'm board president Mark Hamburg. We have Dr. Danielle Gately, our superintendent of schools. We have Ms. Diane Castangway, our deputy superintendent of schools. We have Mr. Ed Chemnitzer, our assistant superintendent for instruction and personnel. John Sheen is our district council. And then we have Christina Cortez, who is the district clerk. If anyone is here to address the board, there were sheets at the front, out front in the lobby. Please share those with the district clerk accordingly. And with that, we will get started. So, we're gonna start off as we always do with our Wheatley Student Representative, and I see her in the background already. Look at, look at the excitement. She's running up. I think it has to be turned on. I'm not sure if the microphone's on. Thank you. Perfect. Great.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lauren Shin, and I'm in tenth grade at Wheatley, and I'm here on the behalf of Student Senate. So, we are now in our third week of school, and this past weekend was homecoming, which started with the pep rally right after ninth period on Friday, where we were introduced to our fall sports teams. And then later that day was the football game. And on Saturday, the Student Senate and other clubs hosted events for the younger students in attendance. There were activities such as musical chairs, donut fishing, and tattoos. I was also volunteer myself, and I can say that I've never face painted that much in my entire life. The PTO organized food fundraisers and raffles. It was a successful weekend to celebrate athletics and increase school spirit. September twenty-ninth is the club fair, and students, especially the new eighth graders, will have the opportunity to explore and join our school's various clubs. Registration for the PSAT will open later this week for students in grades ten and eleven. The PCT is on Wednesday, October twelfth. So, Student Senate is currently planning our forum, which is on the Day of Service and Learning on Wednesday, October nineteenth. The Student Senate Forum is a school-wide event where students get to discuss current topics that are open to discussion. Our Day of Service and Learning is also on the same day later that afternoon, and students will have the opportunity to participate in various activities for a philanthropic cause, whether that be cleaning up on the beach, making sandwiches at a homeless shelter, or even helping at our own school. And later in the fall, Student Senate will also have activities for Red Ribbon Week, which promotes awareness for substance abuse and healthy lifestyles. And if students have any questions, they can always reach out to either Dr. Warner or Mr. Jensen. Thank you, and I hope you have a great evening.
Thank you, Lauren. Okay, so with that, we will turn it over to our superintendent for superintendent's report.
Thank you. Okay, so I'd like to start with some highlights from the opening of school. Once again, a very big thank you to our staff, our students, our families. It really has been great having everybody back. A big shout out to our clerical and our custodial crews who worked all summer so that our schools could look and be ready for everybody to come back. Our seventh graders are at Outdoor Ed. Last night was our Special Education Parent Council Welcome Back Event, which was well-attended and really a wonderful event. We're grateful for Mrs. Daskalakis and her family for hosting us. As Lauren mentioned, it was homecoming this weekend. Really a wonderful event from start to finish. Thank you to Mr. Scotoro, our student athletes, our coaches, our PTO for their partnership in making that a wonderful event. This week, we have our guidance department, our Senior Parent College Night. We are in full swing in college application season. We have Meet the Teacher Night. Last week was Willetts Road, North Side this week, Wheatley next week. October twelfth, I would like to make an announcement that the work session is being canceled, and in lieu of the work session, we will be hosting Homeland Security School Resource Coordinator, Police Officer Todd Atkins, who will be doing a presentation for our community on school safety and situational awareness. So, we'll put that out, but we wanted to announce it here first. Tonight, we're grateful to our Life Skills class for hosting the farmer's market. We are going to see a presentation from them right now on a little bit of the behind-the-scenes work and all the work that went into the first one and then tonight's second event, so I'd like to invite them up for that. Thanks, Essen.
You wanna start here?
Thanks, Essen. Yes, sure.
Please log in at the computer.
I'll share it to you, yes.
All right, while we're getting that pulled up, I just want to introduce myself. My name is Michael Langus. I am Mr. Earl, yes. I am a special ed teacher here at Wheatley for the upper life skills class. You wanna introduce yourself?
I'm Essen. I'm Essen.
This is my buddy Essen, and we're gonna go through a little bit about how we got to our farmer's market in the summer and our farmer's market today.
Hello, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Gately and the East Williston Board of Education for inviting my class tonight. My name is Essen Ajaz, and I am a Life Skills student here at the Wheatley School. We hope you enjoy the farmer's markets that we prepared for you tonight. My class made a presentation about the process of getting to the farmer's market. We started the process with gardening. We took a field trip to Hillix to buy plants and vegetables. We planted the flowers and vegetables in the garden. Every day, we watered the garden. I even came here when there was no school to water the garden with Mr. Helen Mrs. Klein. When everything is ready, we harvested them. To prepare for the farmer's market, we made jam, butter, corn muffins, and for the summer farmer's market, we made dog treats and lemonade. We followed the recipes and worked in stations to complete all of the work. To prepare for the farmer's market, we. Every summer, we host our annual farmer's market. All items that were given away were made by us or harvested from our garden. Some items came from our family's gardens. During the farmer's market, Mackenzie from News Twelve came to see our hard work. She asked questions to teachers, students, and my mom. Here is the clip.
Well, as summer winds down, when kids get ready to head back to school, some summer programs have made sure kids are staying connected, all in an effort to prevent regression. Tonight, we bring you to a farmer's market hosted by the Life Skills Class at the Wheatley School. Harley, can you bring a green cover? For life skills students like Cardi, they spent their summer organizing a farmer's market.
And.
From gardening these vegetables to making this jam.
Who wants free jam? Anyone?
These life skills students are getting a unique summer experience.
So, we're gonna use it as an interdisciplinary way to learn.
They're learning all about nutrition and sustainability, even how to communicate. Final directions.
And this is a blueberry jam. So, they engaged in jam-making. They followed the steps, the recipe, measured, put it together, and so they're really learning a host of skills through this one activity.
All of these students have a wide range of abilities.
What do you mean, bud?
They also work closely with their teachers throughout the year and month through the summer months.
Sure. My name is Essen Ajaz.
Essen Ajaz is seventeen years old, and for his mother, it's a beautiful thing to watch her son in this atmosphere.
Uh, yes, my name is Mr. Alm. To see him so involved and engaged and socializing.
I was working out garden and making dog treats.
And she's beyond grateful for this life skills program. It's absolutely a beautiful feeling for a parent to see their child and so happy. The farmer's market is helping bridge the gap between the two school years.
The summer is a great time to work on maintenance and also, of course, to prevent regression, so we can start our school year off, be ready to go, and ready to work on that next new goal. And they are excited for getting back to the classroom, which of course is in the coming weeks. It'll be right back.
Thank you so much. Have a great night.
So, I just want to say, if I may, thank you so much, Dr. Mazza, and your entire staff, and obviously the children. They're so incredible. So many of us had a chance to visit the market during the summer, and of course, it was amazing to have it here tonight. You know, it's amazing because the community feedback on this has really been incredible, whereas I think if our students could produce enough goods for our entire community, our entire community would actually come down and shop. And that was the biggest fear was, obviously, the publication of such a wonderful event and being overloaded with so many people coming down because it really is just a beautiful thing, and we're just so happy to be able to share and support it the way we do. So, thank you for coming down tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you to Mr. Langus. Thank you to Mr. Langus, Ms. Klein, who's here with us tonight, and Mr. Yallowitz, who's also here with us tonight, for all the work they do to make that happen. So, thank you, everybody, for your support, and thank you again, Essen. Okay, at this time, I would like to welcome Mr. Jensen, who's our Director of Social Studies in Real World Learning, who is here to help us honor all of our National, National History Day winners tonight. So, thank you very much, Mr. Jensen.
Thank you very much. It's my privilege tonight to introduce these students so that they can be recognized by the Board of Education for their achievement. And before going any further, I just wanted to extend thank yous to the Board of Education for their support for this program for the many years in the past and for their ongoing support, and also thank you to Dr. Gately and District Office for their support that allows us to continue to make this program the success that it is. So, National History Day is an annual research competition that is open to students across the United States. Students who complete an NHD project have to conduct extensive research involving both primary and secondary sources in order to develop a thesis that relates to the annual theme and back up their argument with careful thought and plenty of evidence for support. As the NHD website explains, students who complete the projects become writers, filmmakers, web designers, playwrights, and artists as they create unique expressions of history. The annual theme is an important element of NHD, and successful projects need to have a clear linkage between the theme and the individual topics that the students select. So, as we go through tonight's projects, keep in mind that the two thousand and twenty-one theme was communication in history, and the two thousand and twenty-two theme was debate and diplomacy in history. In order to make it to the national level of NHD, so the whole project's called National History Day, but we're recognizing tonight the students who made it to National History Day at the countrywide level. First, students need to be selected from the vast field of projects that are submitted within our own district. Then they need to go on to win at the Long Island History Day Regional Competition in March. Then they need to have a top-two finish at New York State History Day, and then they're invited to participate in National History Day at Washington, in Washington, D.C. in June, which for the last two years has taken place virtually. And as you can see today, the projects take many forms, from paper to documentary to website to exhibit to performance, and we're gonna see examples of all of these as students share little snippets of their work, and they can be submitted individually or as a group. And so, while tonight we're gonna have a chance to see these award-winning projects, first, I want to thank our Social Studies Department and Building Leadership Teams for supporting this project over the past many years and for the last two years in particular. A special thank goes, thanks goes to Mr. Shanahan, who I know all of these students know. He's at Outdoor Ed right now, so he can't join us tonight, but he wants to send his regards to you. And also to Ms. JoBeth Roberts, who is here tonight. JoBeth, you have to give a wave. Sort of ask you to hold your applause. Not this last year, but in two thousand and twenty-one, JoBeth was recognized as a Long Island History Day Teacher of the Year for her work supporting the program and supporting our students. So, we can give her another round of applause for that. So, without further ado, I'm going to introduce the individual students and invite them up here just to share a few words and so we can take a look at their different projects. And so, Jasna, tell her you're the first one to come up today. Jasna is a member of our class of two thousand and twenty-seven. She qualified for National History Day in two thousand and twenty-two, and she'll share with you the title of her project. Her entry was in the category of individual exhibits.
Hi, my name is Jasna Thule, and last year I was in seventh grade, and I completed an individual exhibit titled Failed Diplomacy: Prohibition's Effect on Organized Crime. My topic was how prohibition affected the rate of organized crime in the country and how the Eighteenth Amendment led to it. At the end of my project, I mentioned how the Twenty-First Amendment concluded it and made it better for the country today. This is one of the pieces in front of my exhibit, which shows multiple recipes on how to make alcohol. During the prohibition era, there was a lot of crime organizers that would illegally make and sell alcohol to people and use crazy different methods to just have the feeling of alcohol inside of them. A lot of it included rubbing alcohol and bath subject, which is really disgusting, if you ask me, and a lot of them died because of that, but that's their fault.
Jasna was a first-place winner at New York State History Day, and that's what qualified her for National History Day last year. So, nice work. So, while we see this next exhibit too, when you look at Jasna's, and the next person up is Max, so you can come up, when you see these little pictures, each one is a primary source. They're limited to five hundred words, and they have to find a way to make their topic come to life with very few words, but using primary sources and images. So, next is Max Melnikov, a current tenth grader at the Wheatley School, also an individual exhibit. He qualified in two thousand and twenty-one.
Hello, like, Mr. Jensen said, my name is Max Melnikov, and two years ago, actually, the title of my project was The Unsilent Spring, Rachel Carson Choosing Communication Over Silence. And now, I'd like to read my thesis for you guys. In nineteen sixty-two, Rachel Carson, a marine biologist and environmentalist, published Silent Spring, a book regarding the menacious impact of the chemical pesticide DDT on both the environment and humanity as a whole. Ultimately, Carson had made it her personal endeavor to communicate how the negligent utilization of pesticides was poisoning our environment and our ecosystems. By publishing her discoveries, Carson sparked an environmental movement that led to the abolishment of the use of DDT in the United States. NHD was overall a great experience, and I learned a lot and retained a lot of information. Not only did I enhance my researching and writing skills, but I was able to fully experience the research process, and I'd like to thank Mr. Jensen and Mr. Roberts for the guidance they had provided and the process overall. Thank you.
Max also, he had a first-place finish in the individual exhibit category in two thousand and twenty-one. So, Wheatley is on a roll. Well, Willetts last year, Wheatley the year before, winning that category two years in a row, first place. Nice work, Jasna and Max. Shannon, you are up next. So, Shannon Flackner is a current ninth grader at the Wheatley School. She submitted a paper. She qualified for the two thousand and twenty-two National History Day Fair.
Hello, I'm Shannon, and my project was entitled The Diplomatic NUWSS and the Militant WSPU Debate Against the Anti-Suffragists: The Women's Suffrage Campaign That Inspires the Present. So, my project was about these two differing suffrage movements in the U.K. during the nineteenth century and they, the twentieth century, and they had to persevere despite a lot of backlash they got from the community around them, and their perseverance helped, inspired not only the U.S. suffrage movement, but continued movements for women today. So, here's a little short, some lines for my project. The committed leaders of the two prominent suffrage organizations of Great Britain, Fawcett and Pankhurst, persevered despite the written propaganda of the anti-suffrage societies, being assaulted by police officers in the failing bills in Parliament during the early, early twentieth century. The NUWSS peaceful campaign differed from the militant window-smashing one of the WSPU. Despite both, however, both groups utilized protests to debate diplomatically for women's right to vote. Their voices were finally successfully heard with the Equal Enfranchisement Act in nineteen twenty. Their bravery to stand against the early idea that women belong in the home has given females around the world inspiration in their movements to continue woman acceptance and equality in society.
Shannon won second place last year for her paper in the category of individual papers. So, congratulations again, Shannon. Next, we have Maddie Duffy, representing herself and Harley Rockfelder, partner who couldn't be here tonight, unfortunately. Current eighth graders at the Wheatley School, so they qualified as seventh graders at Willetts Road. They were in the category of group performance, and they qualified for NHD last year.
Hello there. My name is Madeline Duffy, and as Mr. Jensen said, I'm here on behalf of Harley, my best friend, who worked with me all through the year last year, up until around June twenty-eighth, when results were announced for National History Day. So, beyond this insanely long and honestly terrifying project, we had to create a thesis, which we had to include in our script. So, that was probably one of our biggest challenges. So, I'm gonna read like an abbreviated version from our script. Their strike lasted, their strike being the Newsboys' Strike. Sorry, I forgot to mention that was our topic. The Newsboys' Strike of eighteen ninety-nine. The strike of the Newsboys, to conclude, most of them homeless and parentless teenagers, rose up against the biggest. rose up against the biggest journaling companies in New York State. Their strike lasted two weeks with no end or break, followed with debate around the city. Who was right? Who was wrong? Whose side are you on? Diplomatic negotiation followed the debate, and the strike resulted in the success of our Newsboys.
Would you like to share a clip from their performance?
Oh.
Wait, Maddie.
Yep.
The video cannot be loaded.
Huh? No. It's not working. And guess who's sixty-four hundred? I got to get the girls into this. Newsies, newsies, we've got a problem. Huh? What? How could they do it? I thought they were doing this is rotten. Things we always got to do. What? It's gonna hurt you. You have to. They're gonna tear our payload. They're gonna let it go broke. Think you got to get it. Get the plan. Start a union. A union. I don't know, don't you? It ain't that easy. This stuff is not a taste for that. And I don't get it. It ain't no recent union lately. It needs a union, and you can't keep living like this. Picture this. No more bullets, no more guns, and all the crap. I mean, Newsies, Newsboys, Newsies. Things I started bad, all that I do is pretty cheap. Oh, when you get the union, you strike. Union, in my sake. You say it yourself, let's go ask the fellows.
So Maddie and Harley last year won first place in the category of Group Performance, and that qualified them to go to National History Day. When we see a few other performances as well as Maddie and Harley's, students had to write the entire script themselves and then perform it, so it adds multiple layers to that. But we see that with a lot of projects, including documentaries too, where Violet was one of our first documentary winners. She qualified for National History Day both in 2021 and 2022 in the category of Individual Documentary, and she's going to come up to present a little bit about her 2022 project. So here's Violet Brush.
Hi, I'm Violet Brush, and I'm in 9th grade. Last year, I completed a project titled Unelected: The Diplomatic Influence of Jackie Kennedy, and I chose this, I chose this topic because the, because the role of the First Lady has always interested me, mainly because she's unelected, has been given no power from the government, and is given no salary, yet she yields such a tremendous amount of power. And I chose to focus on Jackie Kennedy herself because I figured that she used her popularity in a way that was able to aid diplomatic relations more than any other First Lady before her.
So Violet has a clip from the beginning of her documentary we're going to play now.
The role of the First Lady is not defined in any part of our government's constitution. Instead, First Ladies throughout history have forged their own paths and found ways to support the administration of their presidents. As war flourished and went into the air, the role of the First Lady is whatever the First Lady wants it to be. Eleanor Roosevelt is credited by many with establishing the role of the First Lady as the first. She served the diplomatic role during World War II, when she traveled abroad in place of her husband, who was stricken with polio, but she also served as a delegate to the United Nations after her time in the White House. If Eleanor Roosevelt began this transition, a First Lady from hostess and wife to diplomat and political figure, then Jacqueline Kennedy completed it. Beginning with Mrs. Kennedy in 1961, all First Ladies had traveled abroad as part of their diplomatic contributions. It was Mrs. Kennedy's example that paved the way for the participation of First Ladies in foreign policy. Mrs. Kennedy's diplomatic style would be best described as soft diplomacy.
Just as performances had to write their own script and perform, documentarians had to write their documentary, find sources, and do all the video editing too, besides now writing their documentary. Next, Alyssa Begon and Nicole Shalimov will come up, two current 10th graders at the Wheatley School. They entered in the category of Group Exhibit, and with their projects qualified for 2021 National History Day.
Hi, I'm Nicole Shalimov, and this is Alyssa Begon.
Our project is titled Afro Hair: Style and Statement. It addressed the history of Afro hair, which many overlooked. Historically, black hair was inferior, making many conform to the social standard of straight hair.
During the 1960s and 70s, black women embraced natural hair, communicating to their opposition to oppression.
Afro hair was critical in creating thousands of jobs, the communication of black beauty, and was key for blacks to understand that they were enough.
The photo that we shared is an overview of our board, which organized by time period.
The left panel discusses the hatred African Americans faced due to their hair and the later attempt to assimilate.
The center panel discusses the transition to natural beauty.
And the right panel discusses the sharing of styles across cultures and the evolution of natural hair.
We also just want to say a huge thank you to Mr. Jensen and Ms. Roberts for helping us.
And our social studies teachers.
So Alyssa and Nicole won second place in the category of Group Exhibits in 2021. Nice work again, Alyssa and Nicole. I realize I also forgot to mention that Violet won first place in 2021 and second place in 2022 for her projects each of those years. So again, nice work to Violet. And work on to Willow Grosskopf, who is a current 9th grader at the Wheatley School. She entered the category of Individual Performance, and she qualified for National History Day both last, two years ago in 2021 and last year 2022. Willow Grosskopf.
Hi, I'm Willow. Please excuse my voice, it's like really raspy. My performance was called The Debate Over Civil Rights Protests of the National Anthem: Justify Dissent or Unjustify Disrespect. I'd like to read you my thesis, but before I do, I'd just like to say that although this was a very long and grueling process at times, I will always be grateful for the lessons it's taught me and the things that, oh my God, it's helped me improve on, not only my research, but also bringing in my opinions and helping my research improve my opinions and help me share them to make a difference. So here's my thesis. From the 1800s, people of color have staged civil rights protests during the anthem, refusing to honor a symbol of a country that doesn't extend equal rights and protections to all of its citizens. These protests sparked an intense national debate, because while many believe they are justified and vital to the progress of civil rights, many others believe that they should be banned because they disrespect our country and all it represents. Those opposed failed to recognize that the nation they seek to protect is actually founded on the rights of equality and freedom for all, and the Constitution's First Amendment promised that all citizens have the right to exercise exactly this type of protected symbolic speech. Thank you. Also, thank you to Ms. Roberts and Mr. Jensen. I love you, Ms. Roberts.
You have to hear it three times, sorry, Willa.
I am the national emblem of the United States of America, parodied by Francis Soffey on September 14th, 1814 during the War of 1812. He had been detained by the British in Baltimore and was forced to watch them bomb Fort�anki for 25 terrifying hours. When running free, they saw the affair to flood over high river port, a sudden US had incredibly defeated the British. He was sold into Tuvok and inspired home that eventually became me, the Star-Spangled Banner. As a very fandom, I represent the resilience, strength, and unity of our great nation, as well as the liberty of justice and freedom for all. Thank you, Miss Key, a proud patriot created me. Gave food to vampires. What is that, a scene? People protesting? Wait, they're protesting me? How disrespectful. What's really disrespectful is how uneducated you are about why people protest when you are silent. I'm Paul Tapper, a black national anthem protester for many years over time, here to rule you on American history through your past and will pursue your future, and explain my protestings here in the fandom is not only justified, but necessary to make you change in America.
You'll have to get your certificate from Mr. Canver. Right there. No, you're done talking. Don't worry. You're off the hook, Willow. Willow won first place two years ago and second place last year, both in the categories of Individual Performances. Nice work, Willow. I'd like to invite Adriana Patrizo and Elena Pinto up, two 10th graders at the Wheatley School, who in 2021 entered the category of Group Website, and they'll talk about their website here. Let me pull it up for you guys.
Hi, thank you, hi, thank you so much for having us tonight. My name is Elena Pinto, and my partner's name is Adriana Patrizo. We're 10th grade. The title of our project was The Road to the Discovery of HIV: A Path of Dishonest Communication. So in the 1980s, AIDS was a worldwide epidemic, killing thousands of people. Eventually, two scientists, Dr. Gallo and Dr. Montagnier, from different countries independently isolated HIV, the virus causing AIDS. However, this led to, ultimately led to disputes between the two nations, France and the US, on the basis of who discovered it first, who had the right to the patents for HIV, and if one appropriated samples from the other. This deliberate miscommunication in history makes clear the importance of honest collaboration in all fields, especially the scientific field. And since the theme of NHD in 2021, the year that we competed, was communications, some of our fellow competitors focused more on the highlighted, the good aspects of communication in history and the benefits that it had. However, we decided to hone in on a situation where miscommunication was damaging and detrimental to history as a whole, which we think helped us and made our project unique versus a bunch of different competitors. Thank you.
So for the actual technical aspect of building the website, you could see here, NHD changed their platform the year we competed, so it was pretty difficult to learn how to work with the program and to create the actual design and aesthetics of the website. We completely redid the website twice, I believe, and even met with professional coders to share physical lines of code with us to enhance our layout. However, after Nationals, we realized that a lot of the sites at our level weren't necessarily as aesthetically pleasing or didn't spend as much time laying out the website. So I don't think it was necessary to spend as much time as we did on that aspect, but to focus more on the research. However, in formatting the website, we also got the opportunity to include more unique primary sources. For example, we got an original unpublished manuscript from a lawyer working on the lawsuits to include, which is here, and that's one of our coding features. Overall, though, NHD was definitely a lot of work, but it was a very rewarding experience to have in 8th grade, since we acquired a lot of research skills before officially starting high school. As an 8th grader, though, we also had a lot more time on our hands, and I think it would be harder to spend so much time on NHD in a later year, like 11th grade. But yeah, that's all. Thank you for listening.
Not only did Adriana and Elena win first place at New York State History Day in 2021, but when they went on to Nationals, they won third place in the actual National History Day competition. So third best website across the country. And last but not least is Maddie Rong, a 10th grader at the Wheatley School, who entered in the category of Individual Documentary and qualified for NHD in 2021.
Hi, my name is Madeline Rong. Thank you for having me. So currently, I'm a 10th grader, and I made this project in 8th grade, so it was a while ago. But the title of my project was Norman Rockwell: Communicating Racial Inequality Through Art. So in 1963, Norman Rockwell had painted a painting called The Problem We All Live With, which focused on the issues of racial inequality back in the 1960s. And traditionally, he had painted scenes of American life, but over time, he focused more on the racial tensions in society. And as he matured as an artist and gained more notoriety, he was able to use his paintings and capture pivotal events in order to open up the perspectives of others. So you're going to see a clip of my documentary, and from that you'll see the painting, The Problem We All Live With, and how it conveyed the obstacles six-year-old Ruby Bridges faced at such a young age, and how Rockwell's painting, it represented more than just a piece of artwork, and he wasn't an artist painting without a message. Thank you.
Rockwell took his first step in painting civil rights issues.
Sorry, Maddie.
Rockwell took his first step in painting civil rights issues with The Problem We All Live With, featuring six-year-old Ruby Bridges integrating into the New Orleans All-White William France Public School escorted by four US Marshals. He painted Ruby as an innocent young girl to convey a feeling of empathy and bravery. Every day, Ruby was confronted with enraged crowds screaming brutal slurs. Teachers refused to teach Ruby simply because of the color of her skin. Rushed into the school, women into every classroom, they fall down, every time. After publication, the painting became a powerful message about racial tensions in society. Rockwell hoped others would understand Ruby's struggles and see a different perspective. Rockwell communicated inequality in society, and he stood up for what he believed in.
And Maddie, after winning second place at New York State History Day last year, went on to win second place in the National History Day for the second-best documentary across the country. Congratulations. Give a final round of applause for these amazing students and everything that they've accomplished over the last two years. I'd like to thank everyone and the board once again, and wish you all good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jensen, and I just want to say on behalf of the board, wow. I mean, look at the number of children that we have winning this award at the national level. It's just incredible. So in addition to getting to hear all of your presentations, I think what makes this so exciting for all of us up here is actually looking at your parents and the expressions that they have and how proud they are of all of you. So we want to thank you. We want to thank your parents for so many hours that they know we're there by your side, and certainly all of our teachers that were very much a part of this entire project. So we congratulate you again. So thank you.
I've had the pleasure of watching NHD for the last 11 years that I've been in the district, and every year I keep thinking, there's no way these projects can get better, and every year they get better. So I'm so excited to see what happens this year, and so excited to see you all back here next year, presenting your projects. So good luck to you this year, good luck to the parents this year, and I really am excited, and we can't say it often enough, but Ms. Roberts, we all love you. So thank you and congratulations. Okay, so one last bullet of the superintendent's report. Last Wednesday, we had a work session with a brief update on the facilities and technology work that happened over the summer, so I'd like to ask Ms. Castangue and Mr. Chemnitzer to give us a brief overview of that presentation for those of you who might have missed it.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to cheat here because I don't want to miss anything of the good stuff that happened this summer. So at the Wheatley School, we did a lot of in-house classroom reconfigurations, a lot of, revolved around the Special Education Department. We, through a grant, received funding for a PACE lab, where our life skills and hopefully eventually our general education students will get to benefit from the PACE lab and learning different aspects of working in different community environments and so forth right here in our own classrooms before they go out to the real world. So that was exciting. We also created a lower-grade life skills room, and we converted some small spaces back to larger classroom spaces to accommodate the needs in the building. And the Special Education Department now has their own office space for meetings with students or families or themselves to collaborate and so forth, so we're excited about that. Willett's Road and Northside School got all their furniture, flexible furniture, came out of storage, was scrubbed, was cleaned, and is now back in the classroom, so we're very excited about that. And that also includes back-to-normal cafeteria setups. The Wheatley School also got some new furniture and a new foosball table in the senior lounge. The student lounge is back and very active all day, so that's, we're excited about all those type of things that took place. And I just want to give an update on the projects. Sorry, thanks. That, so this summer, we finished- That, so this summer, we finished the outdoor bathrooms, which hopefully everybody got to utilize this weekend. I think during homecoming, they were very utilized. And then the vestibule, we finally fixed the vestibule, and the finishing touches will be done on that this weekend, and that's complete. Projects that are going out to bid, which have been approved by SED, are the HVAC upgrades in the music wing at Willets Road, grant-funded from the stimulus funds, and also the cafeteria air conditioning, which was also grant-funded. Those are going out to bid probably within the next month, and hopefully next summer will be done. Projects that we are preparing for SED to approve, hopefully go out to bid by the spring and hopefully get done next year. But of course, we'll keep you updated based on supply chain and vendor issues, you know, when these projects will actually happen, are the community, the capital reserve projects that were approved in the May 2019 vote, which include air conditioning in the Wheatley two, small gym, big gym, and cafeteria, renovation of three science labs, and the replacement of the north side roof. So we're working on those plans to send up to the state. So next summer, hopefully, will be a very busy summer for us.
Nice. So as we know, East Wallston continues to be the leader in technology integration and technology hardware in our classrooms. So this summer, we continued on that path. We have installed light-speed audio enhancement in 22 classrooms. Basically, that is a speaker that goes in the ceiling classroom, and it improves peer-to-peer communication, teacher-to-student communication, and we look to advance that and have a system in every classroom as we go forward. That'll be part of our budget going forward. We were one of the first districts to have every classroom have a flat panel in each room. We have now upgraded to having two flat panels in all co-teaching spaces at the K through 7 level. So this past summer, we installed 16 flat panels in those spaces. So when co-teachers split classrooms up in different co-teaching strategies, both teachers have the same access to technology. That's very exciting. So when you see a classroom now, two panels, speaker system in the ceiling, it's very impressive. We're actually looking to host a technology director forum this year. We have replaced 820 Chromebooks that need replacement. We continue out there on three-through-four-year cycle, so we are on pace with that. 320 of those Chromebooks were received through emergency connectivity fund money, so they were free for our school district. So we're excited about that. We also continue with our K through 12 digital art program. We have added iPads and MacBooks now to our high school art classes. So K through 7, and this summer, they did a lot of curriculum work on that. K through 7 has wrote a continuum of strategies, and we're gonna look to add 8 through 12. So you'll see that in our classrooms. Very exciting. We have added a stronger kids. You should be happy about this, I think. We added a stronger filtering program for our Chromebooks and our use of Chrome to keep you safe. We're not trying to handcuff you, but we're trying to keep you safe. So we added securely as a system to further filter our devices. We have added computer science laptops to our computer science program, and we have added Chromeboxes to our classrooms. So when you walk into a Wheatley, Northside, or Willetts Road classroom now, you see a Chromebox, which is sort of a desktop version of a Chromebook. The reason why we did that, to mitigate any potential hacking or malware strategies that exist. We are reducing the capacity of being hacked and also expanding our digital cybersecurity footprint. So we look to continue all these strategies to keep safe our students, their data, and of course, our environment here. And then finally, when you look at all of these technology upgrades, I always say this, it's not about the technology, but it's about the instruction. So our teachers and our students are in the best spot possible with technology, and their learning is just being enhanced. So we're very excited, and when you walk in our classrooms, you know, people are jealous, which is, which is good.
So I saw some excited faces about the digital art, but student Ms. Castangue doesn't always get to report about the fun stuff, but she just told you you were gonna get air conditioning in the cafeteria and the gym here at Wheatley, and nobody looked excited about that.
A new song playoffs.
That's right. All right. That concludes the superintendent's report. Thank you.
That's fantastic. Thank you, Dr. Gately. So just a couple more things on the Board of Education report. First of all, I just want to reiterate on behalf of the board what Dr. Gately already shared, which is, I'm just gonna use the word "wow" again, because this school year was off to an incredible start. And if you are not on Twitter, which I know you are going to hear a lot about through our administrators, through our teachers, you should be following the hashtag #EWlearns, because it was alive the first weeks of school with all the things that are going on in these buildings, in our classrooms, out around our buildings. It's incredible, and really just, you can feel the spirit and excitement. Even our tables are red this year. We are pumped. So really, I just want to thank our custodial and clerical for the start of the school year and all the hard work that they did, Mr. Scuturo for an incredible weekend at home company, and all our PTO moms and dads that really worked hard to make that event a success, and just all of the things that have just been incredible all around us. So thank you again, Dr. Gately. All this work that you hear going on in the buildings, much of this starts with Board of Education committees. We are, again, opening up three of our committees right now. I just am waiting for the fourth one to confirm if there's openings. These are anyone that wants to volunteer, that lives within our community and serve on behalf of the board in an advisory role. If you have an area of expertise, whether it's in construction or architecture for our capital facilities committee, or have a financial background for either our audit or our financial advisory committee. And then the board also has an educational advisory committee, which I don't believe there are openings on this year. But all this work could not be done with all the help and assistance and planning that so many of our volunteer community members do, that work together with our administrators, with our architects, with our financial planners, and in advisory role, and share back with the board as we build our budgets and plan for all these great projects. So it's on the district webpage to the Board of Ed page. If you follow and scroll and keep linking, you will see the application right on there, and the hope is to be able to appoint at the October meeting. Also, the board is going to talk about, and I believe we're going to adopt, our Board of Education goals. It always starts with goals. What do we want? So the board starts at a district level with goals, and then our administrative, department, building, team, goals all get built as a result of that. So I have five goals in front of me that have been shared with me by the members of the Board of Education. I'm just gonna read through them. I'm gonna ask the Board of Ed for comment, and if there's not, we'll move into the agenda items, and anyone that wants to leave can certainly leave, and we'll move forward in moving this meeting forward. So I have five goals in front of us. Goal number one, support the success of year five. I can't believe it's five years already of the strategic plan and the creation of the next year five, the next five-year strategic plan. So you know what that means. We're gonna probably be looking for volunteers to serve on the strategic planning committee, but we could not be as successful as we are without the strategic plan. Really, it's the essence of what we do in this district through the support of the community, all the planning that goes around it, all the budget building, where our priorities go and the funding behind it, it's all part of it. So this is year five, and the board certainly wants to continue to support year five. Number two, continue the expansion of the board's professional development learning opportunities. The board has really taken, starting last year, has taken a deep dive into what everyone around us does. We really want to be a part of that and make sure that we can support in the best ways possible. So boards have their own professional development, but we've really committed to professional learning on a much broader level, inclusive of what so much of our educators and administrators go to, are part of, excuse me. Number three, support the growth of the SEAL of Civics Readiness Project. Number four, continue to support the enhanced use of social media and communication platforms to further brand the district, to communicate and celebrating the district's achievements with the community. The PTO already heard a part of that from our superintendent and how messages are gonna be shared, and we're really working hard to get the messages out in the right forms of communication so that all of our community can be aware of what's going on, and that's gonna be a little different this year. And we're really working to support that as well. And then number five, support the development of readers and writers at Northside and Willets Road in year one of the implementation of the Teachers, College, Readers, and Writers Project. Did I miss anything?
No, you did not.
No?
I just want to reiterate that the SEAL of Civics Readiness, whether we're gonna have a work session sometime in the--
We're thinking May.
May? Okay. And I guess with the Willets Road and Northside, the reading, instituting the new program, that would also be maybe something for next fall for a work session.
Sounds great.
Great. Any other comments from the board? Great. All right. Well, seeing no comments from the board, I'm gonna go into the policy read, but I'm gonna suggest that if anyone has to get home and do some homework or get some sleep, you are, it's a good time for a break, but you're certainly welcome to stay. We have open time coming up if anyone wants to ask the Board of Education anything. But otherwise, thank you guys very much again. So we have a policy read tonight. It's a first read for Policy 5500. Policies are set by resolution by the Board of Education. It's the guidelines of what our administrators use. It's basically the rules and regulations of the district. And by SED law, we have to have a minimum of at least two reads. The board reads it, discusses it, we take public comment, and most likely, if there's no further comment after the second read, it will be adopted. So we have in front of us tonight, Policy Number 5500 Student Records, and I believe I also have the regs, 5500-R. Any comments from the board on the first read that they have in front of them?
The only comment I would just, Mr. Sheehan, this is, you've gone through this, and this complies with the existing education law as well as FERPA requirements?
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments or questions from any board members? Seeing no comments or questions, I'm gonna turn to the public. Anyone in the public have a comment or question in regards to Policy Number 5500 Student Records or 5500-R, the regulations? Seeing no comments or questions from the public, I'm going to close the first read, and I'm going to move into open time. Christina, did we get any slips?
No.
We did not. Okay. I'm gonna close the first open time, and I'm gonna move into Section 3, which is our tenure appointment. Eswa. Okay. You know how it works, though. You're supposed to fill out a slip, but come on up. Come on.
Members of the board, administrators and trustees, thank you for this time.
Bring that microphone a little bit closer to you, Eswa. Thank you.
I have a question on the five goals that you have laid out for this year. Will these be shared, will these be shared with the public?
Right. So the process is, this is the share tonight, this is the discussion of what we do. So the board, I asked for submissions from the board, and then it's on the agenda for tonight for adoption, and then it gets posted to the district website, and that's where it gets shared, on the board page.
The goals were a bit vague. For number one, the goal was to support year five, some strategic planning. It leaves it unclear, unspecified as to what the year five goals are. And the fifth goal was improving reading and writing scores. It does not effectively articulate what is the issue that you're trying to solve, or is it that you're trying to anticipate some issue before it occurs?
Right. So the board, the goals are written very specifically to be somewhat vague in nature. And then what you'll see as we move through the school year, you'll see the specifics of that through the plan and process that the superintendent does, through her administrative team and her department leaders, et cetera.
I do have a question, if I may, with Mr. Chemnitzer. This may be a rhetorical question, but all this technology that we are, let's say, providing to this, to the children starting at Northside and going all the way up to high school, what does it do? Is it enhancing their curiosity? Is it enhancing their problem-solving skill? What does it do?
Technology?
Yeah.
I mean, there's so many ways to look at the technology enhancements in the classroom. You know, for one, we've seen a rise in digital form of assessment tools. So while in the past, a teacher would ask a question, two students raise their hands, and a team don't respond, we have tools now that allow us to see what every child is thinking or knows, and that feedback and that data allows teachers to then go back and to then revise their instruction to meet individual student needs. Technology has allowed us to connect with students outside of this building, so our students are not just confined to the East Wallston community in terms of their learning. So we have students connecting with students across the country, across the globe, through, you know, different projects. It's allowing us students to connect with authors. So in the past, when we read a book in school, we were once again confined to that book in that room. Now we're able to hear from the author, the intention behind the writing. There are just so many ways in which technology now expands the learning, but allows teachers to really dig deep into authentic tools.
So glad that you mentioned that technology allows you to connect with other students across the country. I would like, let's say, bring us down to a little bit more localized in terms of the geography of focus. I was speaking to some parents from the Herrick School District. In the context of the curriculum that they provide and what they provide to the students for academic progress and success, you know, did you, I don't know how much, how many members of the board actually recognize it, a student at Wheatley can actually graduate without ever taking physics. And even the physics that they teach out here is so diluted, is so, so very diluted that it actually makes you question, so all of this technology, they are built on principles of physics. And some, I mean, some may disagree with the context of what all technology entails, but if you don't have a basic clue, as my children could graduate without studying concepts of electricity, magnetism, waves, optics, any of these concepts. So instead of looking outside of the country, I would encourage you to look at what Herrick does. They have an outstanding program in the context of allowing people to, those, they have a program called the Gemini Program, which allows them to recognize students who can be accelerated, and their math curriculum is tremendous. I have to invest, I mean, I don't mind it, I have to invest to, let's say, get my children accelerated. They don't have to do any of those things, their children, because of the nature of the program, and likewise for physics. Their physics curriculum is incredible in terms of what they teach. And we are talking about, let's say, improving reading and writing for elementary schools. We're talking about the question, where do you start from? Do you recognize an issue when they come to the 12th grade or in the first grade?
Right. So this is obviously a answer that would take a lot of detail, as you know, because you've been a participant, a very active parent participant. You've been to a number of meetings where we drill it down to very specific areas, and so much of what we do in very specific areas. So what I'm going to do is turn to my superintendent and ask if she wants our building principal to sort of give you a, our high school principal, a broad-stroke concept of what we do.
Sure. So we're talking about physics. We all teach to the state standards. I don't know what specific program you're talking about in Herrick that would take some looking into if there's a difference in the program that they teach versus what we teach, but we could also get some data as far as how many of our high schoolers take physics. Many do. It's not a graduation requirement, so students could certainly graduate without taking physics, but that's, those are the state rules. It's not a graduation requirement. But I would imagine if we did some research, that many of our students do graduate and take physics.
I have looked at the physics--
As far as the goals, I do just want to mention that the board goals are different than the district instructional goals, which will be published within the next few weeks, and they are very specific. They are measurable, they are time-bound, and they do address all areas of the curriculum. So there are certainly science goals, there are mathematics goals, there are technology goals, there are goals that cover all the areas. So the board goals are somewhat larger umbrella goals. They do support some new initiatives here, like the Readers-Writers Workshop Model, which is a specific readers and writing, reading and writing curriculum initiative that we are instituting this year. So the board is generously supporting that through their goals, but that doesn't mean we don't have goals that are supporting our science and our math program. So you'll see those within the next couple of weeks.
Thank you very much for it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eswa.
Okay, we did get a question from both of the Baloo children. It says "contract," so you wanna come up together?
Hi, my name is Malia Baloo, and I'm here to talk about our amazing custodial staff. My mom told me that you guys are currently working on a contract for them, and I want to share my thoughts. Our staff is always ready to help, and I can honestly say that they do it from the bottom of their hearts. There have been countless times where I've needed-- needed to get into inside a locked room, or need help with my locker, and they've always helped me out. Just last week, I forgot my umbrella in a classroom, and one of the custodians came out to help me. We had a really nice conversation about how happy he was that it rained because he needed, because his lawn really needed it. We have great conversations with them at lunch, which are possible from, which are, which are possible from the relationships we have built with them over the years. They're an important part of our school family. They're here before we arrive, and they're here countless hours after we leave. I truly believe that our school would not function without them. I hope they're able to get a well-deserved and generous contract. Thank you.
So my name is Madha Baloo, and I'll also speak about the CSEA contract. So we all play a role in our school community, everyone, every single one of us. And these last two years have shown that even in times of hardship and uncertainty, when we all work together, amazing things can happen. The board, district, and building-level administration, teachers, staff, parents, guardians, and students are all part of our school community, each with a very significant role. We are all part of a unique puzzle that makes our district so wonderful. When we look back at the last few years, one lesson we have learned is the definition of an essential worker. In our school community, we all had to step up for the safety of all, day in and day out. One main reason we were able to stay open was because of the commitment of our custodial staff. Their work was redefined, and they stepped up to the plate, ready for any challenge they would take on. Additional work was added to their roles, and they did their part to keep us open. I would love to see the Board of Education and the CSEA Custodial Unit reach an agreement that works for all parties. The Custodial Unit was there for us these last two years, and now it's our turn to show them how much we appreciate all their efforts and their importance to our community. As someone who runs the bus stop every morning with one shoe on, one shoe off, hairbrush in one hand, which, by the way, a lot of people underestimate how hard it is to comb your hair as you're walking without a mirror, but I managed to do it. Anyway, after all of this, after all of this, I make my bus drivers often wait longer than they should, and still, they never, ever complain about it. And they always greet me with a very warm smile. They do the unseen work, and we tend to forget how valuable that is. As a student who sees iced coffee spilled in the hallway at least once a week, you would think people wanted to hold on to their $10 Starbucks iced coffee, but instead, sometimes they manage to spill it. I can tell you that the custodial staff has always been available and happy to help. As part of the Class of 2023 Student Government, I can personally testify that they have helped tremendously with setting up tables for school sales and fundraisers. I would like to finish with one last point. Due to inflation and the economic effects of the pandemic, prices of goods have soared in recent years. Necessities such as healthcare have become incredibly harder to access. Healthcare is very crucial for survival, as we all know. And it is very important that we help all, all of our staff access such necessities. Please consider this in your negotiation with the custodial staff as you finalize a contract with them. Thank you very much.
So, thank you both for sharing. We know that it is never easy for anyone to stand in front of the microphones, and more so for our students to stand in front of the board. The board has been keeping the public up to date on where we are over the past meetings with negotiations. I am going to ask our council to share with the public one more time where we are specifically in regards to custodial negotiations.
Thank you. So we have met with the CSEA Custodial Unit. We had discussions, and the status of negotiations will be discussed in the executive session with the board this evening.
Thank you. Okay. I have no more slips for open time. So I'm going to move into the groupings. I'm gonna start on Section Three, which is the tenure appointment. I'm gonna turn it over to, I'm gonna, excuse me, I'm gonna call for a second on item number 3.1. May I have a second? Ms. Megji, I'm gonna turn over the discussion to Dr. Gately.
And I would like to invite Dr. Maza up.
Good evening, everybody. It's with pleasure that I speak with you this evening regarding Charles Yallowitz. Mr. Yallowitz has earned a Bachelor of Arts in English Writing Arts from SUNY Oswego, and he holds New York State Certification as a Teaching Assistant Level Three. He joined the East Wilston School District during the 2018-2019 school year. Since his arrival, he has supported the needs of various students across various settings. Mr. Yallowitz is a trained job coach and has accompanied life skills students to vocational sites. He recently participated in our PACE Lab training at Wheatley to further assist student development of essential post-secondary vocational skills. Mr. Yallowitz has played a vital role in the Wheatley Testing Center and plays a large role in the organization and the function of this service. Mr. Yallowitz is an active member of the professional learning community, finding opportunities for ongoing professional development, and supporting students across a variety of special events, including field trips and the Day of Service and Learning. Dr. Larino, Special Education Teacher in the Life Skills Program, describes Mr. Yallowitz as a hard-working teaching assistant that goes above and beyond to help the students in our special classes. He is an organized team player and very responsible with the students and their individual needs. He willingly attends training he's invited to and adds a lot, not just to our students, but to the preparations that go along with our testing center and student accommodations. She describes working with Mr. Yallowitz as an absolute pleasure. During his tenure in the East Wilston Schools, Mr. Yallowitz has become an integral member of the school community. He manages his daily responsibility with care and integrity. He's been found to be an asset to the Wheatley School and to the students and the families of the East Wilston School District. As such, it is without hesitation that Mr. Weiner and I recommend Mr. Yallowitz for tenure at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Maza. So I'm gonna see if there's any more discussion from the board yet. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm gonna call the vote, which I believe will be a favorable vote. And if it is, Mr. Yallowitz, we're just gonna ask that you stand and come join us up here at the dais. So I'm seeing no discussion, I'm going to call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. Congratulations.[1002.44][1002.44](APPLAUSE)
Congratulations.
Thank you.[1005.44][1005.44](APPLAUSE) I'm gonna take item 4.1 by itself. May I have a second? Mr. Keefe, discussion. Seeing and hearing no further discussion, I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. I'm gonna take 4.2 by itself. May I have a second? Mr. Hirsch, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. I'm gonna take 4.3 by itself. May I have a second? Mr. Fallarino, discussion. Unlike what the public saw last month, where we actually announced in, I'm just losing track of time, in July, where we have district-wide safety plans that get posted, and the community has a chance to comment and share, as well as the board, and then the board moves on it by resolution 30-plus days later, and then those plans get sent up to the state. What you're seeing tonight is actual building-level plans, which are more, of much more of a confidential nature, and get into much more specifics at a building level. They're not open to the public. The board has a chance to review them each year. We do review them. We then adopt them, and then they also get submitted to the state through a state portal. Is there any discussion on 4.3? Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. Thank you. I'm grouping 4.4 to 4.6 together. May I have a second? Mr. Fallarino, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. 4.7 and 4.8 together. May I have a second? Mr. Fallarino, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. I'm gonna groups 4.9 to 4.11 together. May I have a second? Mr. Hirsch, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. Grouping 412, 413 together. May I have a second? Ms. Megji, discussion. We're always very much appreciative of all the donations that are made to this district over the year, and over the many years, and we want to thank both that are being made this evening. Thank you. Any other discussion on 4.12 to 4.13? Seeing and hearing no further discussion, I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. I'm grouping 4.14 to 4.15 together. May I have a second? Mr. Fallarino, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. I have two walk-on items this evening. I am going to take them separate. First one is gonna be item number 4.16. I'll read it. Resolved that the, resolved that upon the recommendation of Superintendent Schools, the Board of Education hereby authorizes the law firm of Gersio &amp; Gersio to initiate a due-bounds complaint, due-process complaint for an impartial hearing against the parent of the student named in Confidential Schedule C on behalf of the Board of Education. May I have a second? Ms. Megji, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. The second item, 4.17, that's a walk-on. I'm gonna read it. Resolved upon the recommendation of Superintendent Schools, the Board of Education hereby approves a consultant services contract for audiovisual service, specialist services with Mr. Richard McKay from October 1st, '22 through June 30th, '23, inclusive and authorize the President of the Board of Education to execute said contract on behalf of the board. May I have a second? Mr. Keefe, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. Thank you. Group items 5.1 to 5.2 together. 5.1 to 5.2 together. May I have a second? Mr. Fallarino, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. I'm gonna group items 6.1 to 6.5 together. 6.1 to 6.5 together. May I have a second? Mr. Keefe, discussion. I want to give a shout-out to Caesar Morales, who has been our Willets Road Night Cleaner for, actually, it doesn't say how many years. I'm not really sure. But Caesar is a friend to all, and we all have gotten to know him over the years, and we wish him well in his retirement, and we thank him for his years of service. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. I have another walk-on, walk-on, I'm gonna, I'm gonna number this, 6.6. I'll read it. Recommendation to accept the resignation of Maria Abatello. I'm sure I'm close on that. Leave replacement teaching assistant effective end-of-day September 6, 2022, contingent upon appointment as probationary teacher assistant. May I have a second? Mr. Keefe, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. Thank you. I'm gonna take 7.1 by itself. May I have a second? Mr. Keefe, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. Thank you. Grouping 8.1 and 8.2 together. May I have a second? Mr. Fallarino, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. 9.1 by itself. May I have a second? Mr. Fallarino, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor? Item passes 5-0. Thank you. 10.1 to 10.9. May I have a second? Mr. Fallarino, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm gonna call for the vote. Items pass 5-0. Thank you. I have a walk-on, item number, excuse me, I have a few walk-ons. I'm gonna group these all together, and I will read them individually. 10.10, recommendation to appoint Maria Abatello as probationary teaching assistant, Step 1, for the East Wilston Union Free School District, effective September 7, 2022. 10.11, be it resolved upon the recommendation of Superintendent Schools, the Board of Education hereby appoints Harriet Spitzer-Picker to a non-probationary, non-tenure seniority bearing position of permanent per diem substitute effective September 14, 2022, through June 30, 2023, pursuant to the terms and conditions agreed between the district and the employee, and authorize the President of the Board of Education to execute said agreement on behalf of the board. 10.12, recommendation to approve the following extracurricular responsibilities at the Wheatley School for the 22-23 school year. The position, the co-curricular position is the Drama Club, and the advisors being recommended is Harriet Spitzer-Picker. I'm grouping those all together. May I have a second? Ms. Megji, discussion. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'm gonna call for the vote. All in favor? Items pass 5-0. Thank you. That brings me to the second open time. Anybody?
Good evening. I read interesting, I learned something last week that I, at least I found it was interesting. Only 14 states in the country require their students to be educated on 9/11. 14 of 50. It's less than one-third. It just, to me, it was shocking. And so it got me thinking, and I kind of asked this question once before, but I'm gonna ask it again, but a little differently. So how does New York State require schools to incorporate 9/11 in their curriculum? And how do we go about executing that requirement?
Yes, Superintendent.
Hi. So it is interesting. It is not a requirement. It is, however, in our history standards. As we know, it is now history.
It's not a requirement?
It's not a requirement specifically that we teach about 9/11, similar to Constitution Day, which is coming up, that is a requirement that we teach about.
Not to interrupt you, but the article that I read said New York was one of the states that required it. And that doesn't mean it was, I didn't fact-check it, but it said that it was one of the 14.
It's in our social studies standards, so it is history. For those of us who lived through it, it doesn't feel like history, but it is a part of our history, 21 years ago now. So it is in our social studies standards as part of history, so as appropriate in our standards. Now, that doesn't mean we don't address it. We address it in age-appropriate ways, in a variety of ways. We read books about it with our students. We make announcements. We talk about it in our classes. So we do address it, but we do teach it as part of history.
So it, you know, I mean, the timing is the timing, right? I mean, it was only a few days, two days ago, actually. Well, yesterday. Wow. No, two days ago, I'm sorry.
It was Sunday.
So do teachers spend a day on it, or is it, is it sort of done in like a fleeting way? I mean, I know they, they're gonna spend weeks on the Civil War, for example. I don't expect anyone to spend weeks on 9/11, but I'm just trying to get an understanding of the concentration. I'm kind of envisioning that it's, you know, it's mentioned, but not really dove into.
No. So nobody does this in a fleeting way. We treat it with the respect that it deserves, but again, in an age-appropriate way. So I know, for example, our 5th graders read a picture book about it. They talked about it with their teachers in class as part of their morning meeting. I know in our high school social studies classes, our teachers spend a little more time with the kids about it, and we have a period of social studies a day. It's not a fleeting moment. It's given the respect that it deserves. In our elementary schools, Mr. Bloomgarden, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not sure how much time is spent, again, in an age-appropriate way with certain students. You might just need to come to the mic, because nobody else can hear you except us. Thanks.
We are mindful at North Side of the age of the children that we deal with, so we spend our time discussing. the historic timeline, as they work through history, which is more towards the end of the year. So, I would suggest, if you have some specific questions about the curriculum, maybe you could email separately and see if you can get a deeper dive into those questions, but I think the answer is being provided, and I don't, certainly don't want to minimize the answer in any way. I mean, this is certainly something we all recognize and feel very much a part of, but I think the question's been answered.
Okay. Can I ask another question? I'll wait my turn if somebody else has a question.
Ezwar, hand up, but I let him go with three questions, so go ahead.
This will be shorter. I just, now that it's September, last year, the last school budget year ended a couple months ago, I was wondering where we stood with the accounting of, you know, the surplus for last budget year.
2.9 million. We spent 95.6% of our budget last year.
So, 2.9 million. So, unless I'm misremembering this, two years prior, they were, they were close to 4 million a year, right?
During COVID.
Yeah, no, I'm not saying there's not.
Two, three. I don't think we ever reached four.
I'm not saying there's not a reason for, but, you know, let's say 4 million, 4 million, 3 million, or maybe 4 million, 3 million, 2 million, 3 million. I mean, it's, it's at least 10 million for the last three years.
No. No. It's not at least 10 million. It's less than 10 million.
Do you remember the?
The highest one year was 3, 3, and then, this is 6. No, we never hit 4.
We never hit 4? Maybe I'm misremembering then. I could be wrong. Maybe at the next meeting, you could have those.
We're going to present the financial statements at the next meeting.
Specifically, the last three years of budgets. I'm just curious.
Okay.
You don't have to have it now. I mean, I'm just curious.
So, Michael, we do present, I have no problem with our administration providing answers to the community, but we do provide these answers around budget season. You know that through the chart. We always provide the annual spend. So, at our next meeting, we'll be adopting, we'll be receiving a presentation, we'll be adopting our financials for the year that just closed, which was the 21-22 school year, right? And certainly, if there's any questions around the specifics of those reports, we can answer them then, but then I would circle back around budget, where we put up our actual charts.
No, I know you do. I mean, you're very transparent about this. I'm not trying to suggest that you're not transparent. No, you're very, I was just curious what the numbers are, and I obviously have it wrong in my head, so I just want to get it fixed.
Fair enough.
All right, so that's, I'm not trying to challenge anybody. I'm just trying to re-educate myself. I guess I'm wrong.
It's okay.
All right?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'm good.